Okay, I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mayor Karatsky, I am present. Moko?
Here.
Groko?
Here.
Kufal?
Here.
Padia? He's here. And Iker?
Here.
Do we need to wait for Tony to get his official?
He's right here.
He's here. Padia?
Present.
Present, right. Do we have any changes for the agenda tonight?
No changes.
Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda for July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
We have a motion by Iker, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kufal. Further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Any comments, updates, concerns from citizens tonight? Doesn't look like we have any citizens here. Council members, any updates? I want to let you guys know I got a letter addressed to all of you, it was in my box about the extravaganza parade, so if any of you would like to participate in the parade, let myself or Ashley Latzki know. If you want more information, it's here, you can see it. Okay, city staff, any updates?
The one thing I have, last meeting when we renewed or extended our ambulance service contract, you asked that I reach out to the city of Arlington. I did do that, I had a conversation with the administrator. I was, if it's okay, I was just gonna send out some information in my weekly email to you on that, unless you want to make a formal report at a council meeting.
I think an email is a good place to start.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, we'll take a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion by Iker, do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Groko, any discussion about the consent agenda? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Moving on to public hearings, there is nothing scheduled today. Communications requests and petitions, there's information about the extravaganza car and bike roll-in and bingo at Nysens Bar. Going on to department and committee reports and action items, the first thing on our agenda is nine C, aquatic center staff hiring and invite Ty to come up to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First thing I have is just to add an employee to the official roster for the GAC for this season. I think most of it was paperwork related, so just looking for a motion to approve her.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Padia, I get a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Groko, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, next we have influ- infiltration discussion.
Sure. I know Steve and Justin probably wanna chime in quite a bit on this, but I just included some ordinances from Glenco and Nicolet, how they kind of tackle that problem. I don't know if you have a chance to look over that or not. I got some basic numbers for televising houses. Kind of just an average price per block. He told me it's about a dollar a foot just to clean the mains so they can run the TV down there. And they're anywhere from three hundred to three hundred and fifty feet. And then it averages about three hundred dollars per service to televise. So you're looking at, if you have a three hundred and fifty block, foot block house or block with eight houses on it, it costs you about twenty seven hundred and fifty dollars a block average to televise services. If you had ten houses, it'd be more like thirty three hundred dollars a house, or a block. I think that's probably the way to, I know there's other towns that actually have a camera crew go into the person's basement or inside their house and televise in to out. But these guys, I think televising from the main, you actually televise their whole lateral, so if there's any bad spots in their service line at all, you'll be able to have that on record and have it recorded. So, and they can run the camera right up to the basement wall, so. I know we did a bunch years ago on Lincoln, from like Sixth Street all the way out to Third Street East, I believe. We televised all those houses on Lincoln, so.
Ty?
Yes.
Oh yeah. I don't know, so this might be a really dumb question. It probably is. Can we rent those cameras or?
Uh, like you're talking like the ones that the plumbers use?
Yeah.
On the reel. I'm sure you probably could. I know years ago, this is before I even came here, that those cameras, just the cameras, were about eighty five hundred and nine thousand dollars. I don't know what they are now. I don't know if you can, can rent them, I'm assuming you probably could.
I guess what I'm ultimately asking is that something like the city would benefit from buying and having so that we could use it for a long period of time, or is it just, are we better off just paying some company to come?
Probably better off paying for some, something like that. Except those cameras are meant for like a four to six inch service line, to televise actual service lines, and that's all private property. Anything we'd use it for is sewer mains and you wouldn't be able to run the camera far enough down to really see anything to make it useful. So, yep.
What do you think?
Right, no, Ty's right, I mean, the cameras on the reel are like, they call them push cameras, because they just, they don't have any, the ones that the contractor that we'd hire, it's basically a robot with wheels on it and goes down the main. And I'm not even sure, I've never seen the lateral launching, how that works, but that's a, that's gotta be.
It's a camera within the camera, so the.
It's gotta be.
It's a main camera, then you have a piggyback camera on top of it that shoots right up the lateral.
But Ty was saying like eighty five hundred, nine thousand dollars for probably a brand new push camera setup.
And that was ten years ago.
These guys use are a lot more expensive.
Well, the, just the, the robot itself is like fifteen thousand dollars.
But then they got software, they document the footages and the manhole, the date, everything is all, they narrate it too.
Yep. Yeah, they can put any information they want to on the screen while they're actually showing.
It just seems like if a city's gonna do a large project, like an entire city, would it be worth investing in something like that, so you have it, you know, you spend that money, you have it?
Right.
You know, I don't know.
Yeah, something like what they use to televise the mains with, it would be way out of our price range, yeah, so. Anybody have anything to add or want to talk about on this topic?
I've been talking to Ty and Justin, but they're pulling together a lot of information and there's, you know, I think they're on it, they got a great start, but there's a lot of stuff to look at, yeah.
Right.
Do we know how big of an area or how many blocks, houses we'd be looking at roughly, or is that what you're?
I think the whole town, go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, you know, the, an approach would be to start on one end of town and just set up a map and cover the entire city. I think that would be the best approach, that way you're not jumping around. You know, we, Ty and Steve and I had talked about starting in the northwest corner of town and then just moving from there east, covering every block, every house, going right down. And that way people can have a timeline and kind of a, an expectation as to when their block or their neighborhood would be completed. We could set this up almost like a street improvement project map where people could see, okay, you know, in two years, it's gonna be my neighborhood. I agree with a lot of the comments, all of the comments that Ty made about the approach using the lateral launch cameras. You know, a big advantage of that is they can video record the lines as they televise them. So if a homeowner wants to see what their line looks like, or maybe has any questions as to why it's failing or what the issues are, we can have that data available and show them the video. Some of the smaller push cameras don't have that recording capability, so we could have that record, if you will, of what the line looks like and the problems. So I, you know, I think we're just in the starting stages, Ty has done a great job of getting some cost together. You know, probably a next step would be to take a look at some budget numbers with Steve as to what makes sense as far as how much the city wants to invest on an annual basis. Based on that, we can kind of lay out what the schedule looks like. Is this, you know, a five-year program, or how does that play into your budgeting capabilities? And then start to roll out the map, if you will, as to how we're going to approach this. I think the other piece of the puzzle that we'll have to have more discussion on after tonight is, once we discover an issue, then how do we approach that, what are the next steps? Do we, once we notify the homeowner that they've got an illegal or illicit connection, do we give them twelve months to make that repair, once we put them on notice? Or is it, is it eighteen months, what's the timeline? I think we probably wanna err on the shorter timeline so that we're not kicking this too far down the road. So, so that would be a step in the process. And then some of the other communities, they do offer a program to pay for a portion of the repair. So that would probably be another decision that we would bring forward to council with some recommendations as to how much do you contribute? If we do find a problem, how much is the city willing to contribute towards making that repair? So I think that's kind of some of the next steps that we need to put together and bring back to the council and have a discussion about how do we approach this, but I think we've got some framework here and we just need to add in some of the detail.
Yeah, there's so many unknowns, I mean, when you talk about the city as an expense, I mean, it all depends on how many we find and, you know.
Right, I think, I think you'd want to cap that number so that, I'll just, for an example, whether it's a thousand or two thousand dollars per repair, you would cap that so that you can budget for it.
Yeah.
And then depending on how many you do each year, I think the first year will probably be a little bit of a learning experience to see, okay, out of all of these, how many failed? So then we can, we can have an idea of how we budget going forward for, I'll say, the cost share, the cost participation piece. Is it, do we have to assume a thousand dollars for every house, because every one of these are failing? Or is it more of a sixty percent hit rate? And again, that's a budgeting piece that we can take a look at. In some years, we might get into a neighborhood where a lot of them are in good condition, so maybe we don't use all of the budget for the cost share repairs and you can roll that to the next year. So it'll probably be some variables there. But I think it's all something that we can lay out, get some budget numbers and then start the process. I mean, quite honestly, there's no better time to start than right now. It's not gonna get any better. And we know this has been an issue, Ty has done a great job of bringing this to the forefront over the last couple of years, the influ- infiltration, and that's really what's causing the basement backups. When you get all this clear water hitting the system, it just can't handle that type of flow. So cutting that off is gonna help with that situation.
This is all done, nobody has to be home with the house, they can just go.
Right, so that's another advantage of hiring a contractor to do the lateral launch is you don't have to make those appointments to get into people's houses. And some people have a clean out in their basement where you can go into, others don't. So if they don't, then you have to do something like have a plumber pull a toilet off or do something like that. By going from the street up to the homes, you don't have any of those issues. You can just get in on a block and boom, 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 take care of all of them. So that's some advantages there.
And I think as far as ordinance wise, I think our current ordinance calls, I think it's in league with our sump pump ordinance. I think footing tiles is actually in the ordinance, but there's no enforcement section of that. If we catch somebody or somebody has it, what's the enforcement, what's the process to eliminate that? I know Steve gave me one from Waconia, and the two ordinance I got, it details out the little more, whatever you guys decide what the enforcement should be, like a ti- like Justin said, a timeline for them to repair if we put anything towards that or not. Yeah, if we do a hundred, all these blocks, it's gotta have some teeth that it's gonna get fixed.
You've probably seen in a packet, Mark put together a draft ordinance.
Yeah.
Yep. It is nice, it would be really nice to know who has what, but like I said, if you don't do anything about it, we're just kind of spinning out where else I'm wasting money, so.
Yep. I think Justin laid it out pretty well here, as far as the things that, the steps and the things that we need to gather as far as some more information for you guys. The ordinance, I think, I think we should definitely take a look at that. Certainly the non-compliance and what would be the, you know, like Justin asked or said, okay, how long a period of time do you got to come into compliance? That would be in the ordinance, for example. So there are some things that we would wanna take a look at and incorporate in there. I only have contacted one city myself and that was Waconia. They've had a program since two thousand and ten. So I talked to an individual who was there from the beginning of that program as far as, talked a little bit about how they rolled it out to the community and what they do as far as how much assistance that they provide, how many, how much they budget each year, how many projects are they able to do each year, those kind of things. I think, you know, they might be a little bit higher than what we might be looking at doing. They're in Carver County, so they're in the metro area, so that might have something to do with it too. Bigger town as well, certainly much bigger. So anyway, it's just, it's nice to talk to some communities though that have actually been doing it for several years. It's kind of good information. Plus they shared like some, not only their ordinance, but also the, they actually entered agreements with the homeowners. You know, the city's gonna pay for this much of it and then the homeowner's gonna be responsible for X dollars. And they wanted that in an agreement, a written agreement, that that's how it was gonna be handled. And so that's just how they did it. But anyway, that's just one example, and I'm sure there's some others out there too.
I'm just thinking more about this, I don't know what our timeline to start is, there's a lot of things to figure out, I understand that. But hopefully by the first of the year, we can start this, or, you know, or sooner even if we get an ordinance approved. And I understand we gotta figure out how we're gonna fund this, but you know, when we start, you know, we were just talking before the meeting, Justin and Ty, I think there's about a hundred blocks, just roughly we figure, you know, you start going, well, I don't wanna spend too much per year and pretty soon we're talking over a five-year period. I mean, I, I'd like to get all this done in three years. I mean, and it's gonna come down to funding, of course, but we sit here and tell people, oh, we're on it, we're just gonna take five years, I mean, that's, I'd be willing to, you know, spend more and get the, get the, get everything figured out and the results on the stuff and get it going, try to get it done sooner than that, but there's a lot of, a lot of stuff to figure out yet, I think. We'll just have to look at that.
Once we get more information, I mean, we should probably have a work session so we can just focus on this and just talk more in depth about it.
I understand what you're saying too, but I think that there's, there's definitely areas in the town that are consistently flooding more so than others. If you start out focusing on those areas, right, maybe we can start on that area and then slow down. I think. Hit it hard, or is it, do you think the whole city's?
We could probably fit, down the line, we could probably map the town or look at the town and map out a priority list, you know, saying we're gonna do, you know, say the oldest parts of town.
I just, I see people on the hill though that don't have flooding issues themselves and that have a, you listen, just, or a connection, they're flooding out the people down here.
Right.
Also, so it ain't, it ain't just the people that are being affected, it's the people up on a hill too that are.
Yeah.
They don't know what they, that they have it, of course, but, yeah.
So luckily we have a lot of resources to pull from, because we definitely are not in the boat alone. We're not the best by any means, but we're far from the worst. Just talking to a lot of the workers around and surrounding communities, there's some that are a lot worse than ours. There are some that are better, but there's few that are way below what we are. So we're, I think we're heading it off in the right direction just to try to shore this stuff up, so.
Yeah, I agree with Ty's, there's a lot of communities that are just not addressing it, so I think that moving forward, just to take action, you know, we're moving in the right direction.
And once you get them taken care of, they're done, you know, that's the main thing is. And that was part of Justin's study when we were talking, when the college was gonna originally come in, we did that study on how many, how, how big can the town expand without doing something with the ponds? Well, that, the less clear water you get out to the ponds, the better we have, the better shape we are too. So that kind of all ties in with it also, so.
No, I agree with the workshop, I mean, as soon as we can when we get more information and I just, I want this to be one of the city's biggest priorities until it's finished. Honestly, there's a lot of, a lot at stake.
Right. All right, that's all I have unless anybody's got any questions.
Uh, yeah, so just again to back up you.
Yep.
Just turn gears on me real quick. So there was an incident at the pool, I just, I talked about it at the personnel committee, there was one of the lifeguards had a save there. My, my, my wife is there and she was really excited that, one of your really young lifeguards like threw the little.
Oh, okay.
And so I don't know what you have for a program there for recognizing the lifeguards, it's what I do as a save, but.
Yep, they keep a running total of their quote-unquote saves in the office, so they actually mark down how many of these saves they've had, so.
Yeah.
There's more than you think there are.
It is, it's an amazing deal, so I don't know how they're, they're recognized, but maybe if, if even at the, if the council maybe signed a certificate or something for them to give to them, because those are, they're really young kids that are working there and it's a phenomenal job that they're doing, so. Any way that we could recognize them.
I will let them know that, definitely.
Yeah, thank you.
You bet.
Anything else for us, Ty?
Is that it?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Next, for the police department, we have hiring of a full-time officer. We'll invite Chief Iktin to come up to give us more information.
Good evening, everyone, just the one topic tonight, hiring a new, hopefully new full-time officer. As you know, we've been looking for a full-time officer since Officer Fisher left last Thanksgiving. We've been looking for a new full-time officer for about the last eight months now. We have a few applications over that time, we interviewed several candidates, and Ryan Hilsheim is a candidate we feel is best suited to fill our full-time opening. Ryan has approximately five years of full-time law enforcement experience all in the state of Minnesota and he currently lives in Sibley County and has no plans to move anytime soon. Ryan interviewed very well, he's extremely excited and eager to start working for the city of Gaylord as a full-time police officer. Ryan recently passed his background, psychological testing and physical testing. I guess based on Ryan's full-time experience, the way the job market is, my recommendation is to hire him at step four. And I talked to him today and he does not have full-time employment right now and he's hoping to start as soon as tomorrow. So that would be, the FTO officer Schmidt works tomorrow, they'd have one shift together and they'd have the weekend off and then be back on Monday, so that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, we're looking for a motion to hire Ryan. Ryan Hillesheim as a full-time police officer with an effective date of July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, at a start, starting wage of grade thirteen, step four. Motion, or, motion by Iker?
Second.
Seconded by Moko, any further discussion?
Just with that start date, I mean, you're gonna have uniforms for him and he's gonna be ready.
I talked to him about that, he's got, we've got it figured out.
Okay.
Without giving you all the details, we got it figured out, but we'll send him up to uniforms this weekend, so.
Then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you much.
Next, we'll move to city engineer. Invite Justin Black back up to the podium to talk about the twenty twenty-four street and utility improvement project pay request.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll, before we get into the pay request, I'll start out with just a little progress update on where we're at with, with the construction. We did have our regular progress meeting this afternoon with the contractor and you may have noticed they're starting to do some of the concrete work in the parking lots downtown. They started that today, putting in some of the curb and gutter, and that's gonna continue the rest of this week. The contractor told us that middle to end of next week, they'll do the paving work in the downtown area on the parking lots and the alleys. So that's, that's great news, they're on schedule to get those finished up before extravaganza days, which is what we had in the, in the contract. So that's progressing nicely. Talking more about the project work, the east side of town, they were out there today finishing the drain tile installation on Railroad Avenue. Next week, they're gonna finish up on some of the placement of the gravel base on Tower. And then those two streets, Tower and Railroad, we should see pavement going down the week of July twenty-ninth. So things are, even with all the rain that we've had, things are really moving, moving along nicely from that standpoint. So for those projects out in that area, I would, I would think that by the first week of August, we should see those roads opening up with maybe some finishing touches left, but for the most part, get them open to traffic. We've been keeping Michael Foods informed about the different closures and, and they've been a great project partner as far as working with their employees, so I think things are going well. As a whole, everything's gone great, but the, the project just can't get done soon enough, so we're, we're trying to keep things moving and the contractors are doing a good job of that. So happy to answer any questions about the progress, otherwise we'll jump into the payment. All right, so this is application for payment number two, we've reviewed it and we're recommending approval. The dollar amount is a hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-nine cents. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve application for payment number two.
I'll make that motion.
A motion from Padia and seconded by Moko, any further discussion or questions? Then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Moving on to the next item, we have our future capital improvement projects plan.
So in, in front of you is a copy of the future capital improvement projects plan. I know what the, the last work session, my associate, Bodhi Brach, went through this in, in quite a bit of detail, so I'm not going to dive back into the details this evening. There were a couple updates made to the plan coming out of the workshop. One was deleting one block of Main Avenue from Seventh to Eighth on project number four. And then we did update the title to future capital improvements project plan, so we made that update so that we can refer to this in the future going forward as the future capital improvements project plan. And then we did update the cost estimate for the city share of the CASA twenty-one project. So that, that cost went down to six hundred thousand dollars. We were able to find some utility improvements that we could make some adjustments to and reduce that cost for the future city share on that. Otherwise, everything else stayed the same, and like I said, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but otherwise that's kind of the extent of my presentation regarding this. And we'll take a look at it again next year. We've been doing this on an annual basis for, oh gosh, probably the last eight or nine years. So we bring it back and take a look at it each year and then bring it back to the council. So this will continue to be an ongoing thing, but at least there's a, a map and some class that council can share with, with folks if you get questions about what's next or when, when is street X, Y, or Z gonna be done in the future? So that's kind of a, a guide.
Thank you, Justin. So tonight we need a motion to approve the future capital improvement projects plan.
So moved.
Got that one first. Motion made by Groko, seconded by Iker. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, moving on to new business, we have Mitchell Winsloff here to talk with. Okay, next, moving on to new business, we have Mitchell Winsloff here to talk with us about property and liability insurance renewal. So welcome Mitch.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, council. I'm Mitch Winsloff. I'm with Community Insurance Agency here in town. Over the last few weeks, I've been working with uh, Steve Helgett as well as the League of Minnesota Cities in order to prepare our upcoming renewal for the 2024 property and casualty insurance. Our renewal date is coming up here at August 1st. Uh, included in your council packet, I included a quick little summary sheet of uh, what we got going on and what changes were made uh, upon renewal here. Uh, as you look at the quick summary, a quick overview, uh, 2023 versus 2024, we've seen a 2% rate increase. I think if uh, if everybody here present opened up their own personal property renewals and seen a 2% increase, I think we'd all jump for joy. Uh, given the dynamics going on in the insurance industry here lately. But jumping in a quick overview here, property, property column, we've got just uh, just under a 10% rate increase largely due to the annual inflation. Each year, we apply inflation factor to our buildings, contents, and property in open. This past year was a 5% annual inflation factor. And then we also added a, a couple locations that were previously omitted on our insurance policy. There's three locations that we added, so that, that makes up that 9% there. Uh, moving on to the mo- mobile property, uh, again, that's, a lot of that is annual inflation. They did take a small rate, rate increase on that item. First-party cyber liability stayed flat. Our municipality, our municipal liability is down 13% largely due to the fact that Gaylord has historically answered four to uh, full-time equivalent police officers. This year, we answered three. Um, tonight, did we just hire a fourth? Is that what happened today? So we should, we'll have to revise that and that uh, that rate will increase. It's roughly three thousand dollars uh, per full-time equivalent on a police liability standpoint. So ultimately, we're going to end up being flat, flat on the municipal liability side. Uh, auto liability is down, auto physical damage is up. Uh, a couple of things to note there is we added a couple of trucks. We added a new fire truck here, a high-dollar fire truck this past year. That makes up a lot of the physical damage increase. And our auto liability is down largely due to our auto modifier going from a 1.15 down to a 1.0. A lot of that is because uh, 2019 was a bad year in terms of claims for our auto liability. We had three incidents in 2019 that are coming off our back, turning nineteen, or turning five years old this year. So improved modifier there helps our rating. Hopefully, that continues. Few housekeeping items here. This past year, we submitted uh, four claims to our insurance policy. We had a slip and fall claim. We had a large hail claim in October. We had a ci- we have a city ordinance claim that's open currently, and then we have a water sewer backup claim that's still currently open. Um, if anyone's got any questions specifically on the renewal, I'd answer those. Uh, one other item here that I've also got is that uh, each year, the League of Minnesota Cities asks that we uh, designate whether or not the city chooses to waive or not waive our statutory tort limits. And uh, if a member does choose to waive the statutory tort limits, uh, a, a single claimant could potentially recover up to the amount of the limit of coverage as purchased. We have a $2 million underlying limit as well as a $1 million excess umbrella currently. Traditionally, the city of Gaylord has chosen not to waive the historic, or waive the statutory tort limits. And in that case, an individual claimant could recover no more than 500,000 on any claim in which the statutory limits apply. Um, so I think we need a motion on that. And then uh, if there's another motion to accept the, the quote, as quoted, we'll, we'll take that.
I'll make the motion to not waive the monetary limits on municipal tort liability established by Minnesota State Statute 466.04.
We have a motion by Moko. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kufal. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. So the second motion needed is to.
Eh, except the quote as quoted, yeah, aside from the additional, we're going to make a change for the full-time equivalents. And then one other thing to note as well is that's not included in that detailed portion is that Steve and I, we talked here in the last week about increasing uh, cost of the lift stations. We, uh, Steve spoke with Justin Black. We thought we were a little bit light on there. We chose to increase uh, the contents limit of 75,000 each, which is a $68 increase per station.
So we need a motion to approve the quote um, with the changes discussed.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Kufal. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Groko. Any further questions or discussion?
We may have a couple other small adjustments too. Um, SCH is reviewing our water towers as well, just to make sure that we're where we should be as far as if we ever had to replace them.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much, Mitch.
Thank you.
Steve, do you, you'll take your signatures next?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to 11B, ordinance number 366, zoning ordinance revision, and I will turn that over to Steve.
Thank you. Um, in your packet, um, this is a very large um, ordinance here. This is kind of the nature of it. I apologize it is so long, um, but this is the nature of zoning ordinances. Um, it's been several years since the city of Gaylord has updated its zoning code. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission took on the task a couple of years ago. And they've been working on it diligently. So what's in your packet is about 135 pages of zoning ordinance. The, every single section, just so you're aware, every single section in here, the Planning and Zoning Commission did go through. And so they did do a lot of due diligence in putting this together. Uh, we certainly used our current zoning ordinance as a, a reference. We also had some templates from other cities that we looked at as well. Simply, our, our ordinance is outdated. The last time it was updated was 1995. There was a number of things that were just not in it for, in comparison to other cities. And so fortunately, we were able to go and have some other cities versus recreating all that. And so that worked out really well. Um, it's just a, it's a very tedious task and it takes a long time. And in some respects, it's very dry material to go through. Uh, but the P and Z did do that over the last couple of years again. Uh, so I don't, eh, this is kind of one of those hard things to really give you much information about, but basically, um, what's in my request for council action is basically the, the things that were added to it. There were certainly some language changes throughout. But there was a number of sections, there was, I counted them there, that I had listed there. There was 11 new sections to the zoning code that we didn't previously have. One of the big things I also wanted to mention, um, and I'm not going to detail all that. I guess in some respects, I'm just going to open up the questions and we'll let the discussion go from there. Uh, but I did want to mention that the commission is recommending that we would reduce the number of industrial districts that we have. We currently have three industrial districts. Typically, there's only, there's only a need for two. Sometimes you'll see in some communities where they have more than two residential districts, we're one of those. And I, I could see where that would come into play. But generally speaking with industrial, it's usually just light, light industrial and heavy industrial, and that usually fits all the needs of the community. And I've had some con- conversations just to share with other planners who have been in um, working in local government for several years, and they would concur with that. So uh, we looked at it, um, and so that was, that's being recommended. Part of that then, if this, if the council agrees to that, we would have to make some adjustments to our zoning map, because if we're at three districts right now, we're reducing it down to two. The commission will have to go back and do that exercise of just making sure or adjusting the, the zoning map accordingly. And so um, with that, again, this, considering the size of the ordinance, this is a very short presentation here, so I'm going to open it up to questions here. Um, I did uh, send this out to you guys about a month ago, um, and in my weekly email. I know, again, this is very dry. I'm sure it could put you to bed at nights, but um, I have to uh, also give a lot of compliments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, they did hang in there very well. Sometimes this was the only thing on the agenda, so, and they still showed up to the meeting.
Steve wouldn't let us cancel any of the meetings. We had to keep plowing through it every month, but uh, this is Steve's bread and butter. You guys know that. He was a great guide for the last couple of years working on it. But you know, a lot of credit should be the volunteers that are on that committee planning zoning. They did a great job of keeping the nose to the grindstone, because it is, it is dry stuff and it, but it, it's been a long time it needed to be done.
And Mark can certainly attest to this. This is a very important ordinance. All of our ordinances are important, but there's so much uh, revolves around land use. And it really, you need to have a strong ordinance in place. It does puts you in a much stronger position or better position when there's some issues that come up. And one of the things I, I did stress to the planning commission, and I'm stressing it to you as well. These, these types of ordinances are never an end to all. Just because we're updating it doesn't mean at some point, might be a month from now, it might be six months or a year, we will be coming back with a change. Um, the, these things are always evolving and changing. So um, it's just something to keep in mind that just because we went through this exercise, it doesn't mean that, well, this is it. We're, we're good to go for a number of years. That's not true. And I also wanted to mention, uh, Mark's office did go through all the definitions in this um, ordinance, which was very extensive. Um, definitions is kind of the, you have to have strong or good definitions. Everything evolves from that. So it's very important um, to have that gone through, and I think they did a very good job with that. And we incorporated all their recommendations, which were several. Mark, if there's anything you want to add?
No, I would just echo what Steve said, that this is a pretty important ordinance, probably the most important ordinance that we have. So Steve deserves, planning commission deserves a ton of credit for undertaking a huge task and really doing an excellent job. I was really impressed. You know, I, I, we did go over the definitions, but you know, I, I don't want to sit here and pretend like I was the person that contributed them. I mean, it was Steve in the planning commission's work, so they deserve a lot of credit. Um, I think this is a, a much-needed update and kind of sets the table for hopefully the next, you know, not to say that Steve's point, that there's going to be updates to it, but this kind of lays the groundwork for the next 10 years of growth and prosperity in Gaylord, so it's really exciting.
I just want to echo everyone else's um, comments I sat in on several of those meetings, and everyone did a great job putting this together, so I don't have any further questions. I don't know if anyone else has questions. Extend our thanks again to everyone involved and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 366. Motion by Iker, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Groko. Any further discussion, questions?
So this will be considered the first reading, so we'll be coming back with this again, and then we'll have a summary publication, of course, at the next meeting.
Sounds great. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Moving on to resolution uh, 2024 dash 27, um, a resolution amending the 20, nope, I'm sorry, got ahead of myself. Resolution 2024 dash 26, a resolution governing the counting, governing the counting of write-in votes. And I'll turn that over to Steve.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is actually a proposal from the county itself, um, that's recommending this to us, that we would statute has changed a little bit as far as write-ins, and it can be, as you might be able to appreciate, um, when you're talking, especially at a, on a county level, the amount of write-ins that there are and that they have to basically count all those. Um, a lot of them really don't amount to much, um, in some respects, spec- especially when, unless somebody's doing a write-in campaign. Uh, the write-ins are very nominal, generally in the numbers, for, for like a city for us. So there is provisions in the state statute. Uh, basically, this or, this resolution is basically stating that we will not count the write-ins unless, and this is coming right out of statute, that um, the candidate uh, provides a written request to the city to have their write-in votes counted. Or um, if um, the total write-in votes uh, for one specific person are greater than the votes for an actual ballot candidate, then they will be counted. So it's not to say that they never will be counted. So if they're more than about candidate, they will be counted. So that's the way the statute's written. So, so it does cover those people that say that they were a write-in campaign, or if they just happen to get a lot of votes, um, then they would still be counted in those, in those situations.
Does the county send them this out to every entity?
Yes, including the townships, I believe.
What if they, what if they have some that don't approve it? I mean, then, you know, if it's not all.
Then they still have to count them. So it, it does take the, the, the city or the township to approve it. So we basically have to agree to it. That's my understanding.
There's nothing else. We're looking for a motion to approve resolution number 2024 dash 26, resolution governing the, governing the counting of writing votes.
I'll make that res- I'll make the motion to approve resolution 2024 dash 26.
We have a motion by Padilla. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kufal. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, moving on now to resolution 2024 dash 27, a resolution amending the 2024 comprehensive plan, future land use map.
Uh, this is an item coming from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, you may recall a few months ago, we had a, a solar company that was interested in putting a solar garden on the east side of town on Highway 5. And at that time, we, we discovered that our zoning map and the comprehensive plan, future land use map, did not match up. And so after going through that process with that property and the council basically denying that application to develop a garden out there, um, it was also discussed and determined at that time that we would consider amending the comp plan for that future land use map, so it would align up with the zoning map. And so the Planning and Zoning Commission actually identified the parcel immediately to the west of the one that was in question at that time um, as also not being in alignment with the zoning map. And so we have two parcels. And so they agreed to go ahead and hold a public hearing on both of those. Uh, the landowners were notified by mail. Um, I did talk to one of them, um, that contacted me, and after explaining the situation, they were fine with it. It basically doesn't change the zoning of the property. They still are able to use the property as a way they're currently utilizing it. It has no impact on the zoning. It's just, we're just correcting our comprehensive plan. So it's, I think it was just an oversight back when the plan, comp plan was last updated. It was just one of those things. And so um, the planning commission is recommending to go ahead and approve uh, amending the future land use map in regards to those two parcels. So basically, both parcels uh, would be guided toward light industrial. They're currently both zoned. What we call our I2, which is medium industrial. Uh, one of them currently right now is guided towards agricultural. The other one is commercial. And so again, just trying to line them up. Um, that's basically it. So if there's any questions, I'll entertain those.
Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission did their work on this, so um.
There is a, on page, oh, it's like 261 of your packet. It identifies the two parcels. So 261. Uh, one's a odd-shaped, this one, and then one immediately to the west. So they both abut Highway 19. So those are the two parcels in question. So the one closest to Highway 5 intersection, that one is uh, identified as commercial right now. The other one is guided towards agricultural. So again, we're looking to amend that map, so then they'll both be guided towards industrial.
So we're looking for a motion to approve resolution number 2024 dash 13, a resolution approving amendments to the city of Gaylord. 2024 comprehensive plan, future land use map.
The 20, 24 dash 27?
Did I say it wrong?
I don't know.
Oh.
Oh.
Uh, it's wrong on the, the.
Yep, it is.
In the agenda.
Should be 27.
But you are right, it is 20, 27. So amend that motion request to 2024 dash 27.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Padilla, seconded by Iker. Any further question, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Moving on to 11E in our agenda, we have the billboard draft ordinance.
Yes, you recall last month, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission asked for your um, guidance as far as whether or not we'd like to establish uh, an ordinance basically within our zoning code that would allow for billboards. Uh, you may recall Dwayne Frederickson of Circle City Outdoor, he was present at that meeting. Um, and you basically at that time had a. City Outdoor. He was present at that meeting. And you basically at that time had a discussion, and you agreed to send it back to the Planning Commission for them to research. At their last meeting earlier this month, they came up with this draft here for your consideration. They thought in light of that we've never had billboards before, allowed them, that before they go ahead and move into a public hearing, that they would just see if this was acceptable. And then if it is, then they would go ahead and schedule a hearing and hold it and send back a recommendation. So just some quick highlights, and this is kind of similar to what Dwayne was proposing when he was here last month. We're looking at 300 square foot per side billboards, 10 by 30, maximum height of 30 feet. The distance between billboards would have to be a minimum of 400 feet. Shall be no closer to an intersection than 200 feet. And the maximum number of billboards allowed for any single parcel would be two. Again, this would only be in the I3 district, which is our heavy industrial district out by kind of Michael Foods area. So it would only impact that district only. So no other areas. And that's really primarily out there. We don't have that district anywhere else. So those are some of the highlights. So again, just looking for feedback. If this is acceptable, or any tweaks, or anything you want to do.
In letter E here, should that one be out of there? It says billboard shall be one 400 feet.
Yep. Yep, thank you.
Was it typo?
Yeah, there's just, it says one in there in front of the four. Letter E.
Now, we just need consensus if this looks good. So if anyone's satisfied with it, we will send it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing.
I'm good.
Good. Everyone good? Okay, we have consensus.
Thank you.
So just out by Michael's Foods, it's not going to be going on that full strip. We're not going to have billboards going.
No.
The way the ordinance is written, there's really only space out there to ever. So it would be the addition of two.
Thanks. And it would be, they would have to get a condition, I guess, permit.
Okay. Next item on our agenda, 11F, we have ABDO Audit Service Proposal. And I'll turn that over to Steve.
So I did contact ABDO, and they did provide their proposal for renewing our current three-year service agreement with them with another three years. Their fees did go up a little bit, and I will read a little bit, just to share from ABDO, Tom Olinger specifically. Some of the reasons for their increases include the salary market for CPAs has increased significantly faster than the CPI rate, around 6% to 8% per year is what they're looking at as far as recruiting and retention concerned with CPAs. They also mentioned that there's been additional, this has been going on for years, additional reporting audit standards that the state auditor's office has been requiring. And he said also that their firm has been investing a lot in their staff development and service investments outside of their salaries. So combination of those factors, probably primarily the industry as far as what they're having to pay their employees. So they're passing that on to us. If you looked at both of the agreements, the one that we just expired and the new one, you may have noticed there's tax income and financing reporting on the new one where it isn't identified on the old one. We always have to do the reporting. If you have a TIF district, you have to do the annual reporting to the state. The question is who is doing it. Prior to the last agreement getting approved, we were having Northland Securities do our annual report. I changed that for two reasons. One, ABDO's, all their financial information comes from our auditor. So they're the ones most familiar with our finances. Secondly, the fees were less with ABDO. And so it was kind of an easy switch. They charge us, this year or last year when we did our reporting, ABDO charged us $2,000. They're proposing the same thing for this year. So they, and I think it goes up $100 per year in that respect. So when you look at that, you'll see that missing from the old service agreement. So with that, I'll open up to any questions.
With inflation, we're lucky to be in higher.
We've, from a staff standpoint, we're extremely satisfied with them.
They always do a good job of explaining it to us as the council, so I'm happy with their service as well.
I also should mention, you know, we do our financial plan. That is separate from this. So keep that in mind.
So you're saying there's going to be more fees, more...
Yeah, we have a separate agreement for that.
So we're looking for a motion to approve ABDO's Audit Service Proposal. So motion by Eker. Do we have a second? Seconded by Groko. Any further question or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned.